I will call the meeting to order. Welcome to tonight's work session. We're going to start off with a pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, tonight we are going to have proclamations, and we're going to have quite a few of them. So, we're going to start the evening off, and we are beginning the proclamations with the Gwinnett Square-Inglewood Chamber Strings with Mrs. Feliciani as the director and Mrs. Swaveley as the accompanist. Good evening.
Good evening, and thank you so much for having us here. In front of you right now are our Gwinnett Square-Inglewood Chamber Strings students. They were invited and performed at the 2019 Pennsylvania Music Educators Association and National Association for Music Education Eastern Division Conference this past April. This is the second time our ensemble has been selected to perform at this prestigious event, and being selected for this conference highlights Gwinnett Square and Inglewood as having a model orchestra program in the state of Pennsylvania and served as an inspiration to other music educators along the east coast. Just this year, we have collaborated with teachers from not only local districts like Central Bucks, but music educators as far as Missouri and Georgia who observed our ensemble and took ideas they learned back to their home districts. Our Chamber Strings Ensemble is auditioned from the over 100 members of our school's orchestra and participate in Chamber Strings, Advanced Orchestra, and Orchestra. They rehearse for one hour each week and participate in a number of district and community events such as the North Penn String Festival, the Upper Dublin String Orchestra Adjudication, and Music in the Parks. They have even participated in the prestigious World Strides International Music Festival in New York City. Since 2013, this ensemble has consistently earned the highest ratings of Superior at all of these events and on several occasions have been given the distinction of Best Overall Orchestra. The students being recognized today have not only upheld our tradition of excellence, but have created their own legacy for future students to aspire to. What students learned in elementary school sets the foundation for the rest of their learning at North Penn. Already at this young age, these students are high-achieving musicians who appreciate excellence in the work it takes to achieve it. Our orchestra is successful because of the pride these students take in their own work and achievements and the positivity with which they collaborate to make something great. The skills they have learned have not only made them successful in music, but in all aspects of their education. I am certain that these students will stand here again many times throughout their education for their achievements in our North Penn community. Being recognized tonight are Lena Andrews, June Biswas.
Lena, do you can just start everybody? And as the name is called.
June, go ahead. Kim, Simmer Claire, Joyce Koo, who is unable to attend tonight, Ayushi Kulcarney, Anthony Kwan, Mara Landis, who is unable to attend tonight, Jason Lee, Yuri Lee, and Vitha Madaka, Victoria Miller, Joshua On, Matthew On, Kritta Ranjath, who was not able to be here this evening, Janine Saravanen, who is also not able to be here this evening, David Song, Bebe Thompson, Michelle Trader, Victoria Sang, Alyssa Valdivia, Athalash Famaldev, and of course, our accompanist, Mrs. Jill Swaveley, who is also unable to be here this evening.
Mrs. Feliciani, if you could also come through? How about a round of applause?
Yes.
Thank you so much for coming out tonight. All right, I think we have the next group ready to go here. This is the Penbrook and Penfield P2 Select String Ensemble with Mr. David Pimentel as Good evening. All right, I think we have the next group ready to go here. This is the Penbrook and Penfield P2 Select String Ensemble with Mr. David Pimentel as the director. Good evening, Mr. Pimentel.
Good evening. It is with great pride that I present to you the Middle School Exemplary Ensemble, the P2 Select String Ensemble. They represent, through audition, the best students of the string programs of Penbrook and Penfield Middle Schools. That's why we call it P2 Strings. These students work very, very hard. They practice every Thursday from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. without any breaks. They travel and perform at least 11 concerts a year as part of their regular schedule, which is more than the three concerts which the regular orchestra students perform on. They also have traveled to the PMEA and NAFME Conference in Pittsburgh, which I should also mention, as part of that very amazingly wonderful experience, we also had the privilege of stopping at the 9/11 Memorial and performing a little tribute performance there as well. Accepting awards tonight, the following students: Mr. Marvin Nguyen, Mr. Jason Ween, Ms. Suah Yum, Ms. Casey Hong, Mr. Julian Ma, Ms. Kira McBean, Ms. Anika Nigam, Mr. Daniel O, Ms. Madeline Stahl, Mr. Joseph Yi, Mr. Sean Yi, Ms. Anna Chin, Ms. Hannah Cox, Ms. Shreya Hari Krishnan, Ms. Corinne Koberski, Mr. Jamin Konseri, Mr. Rinzen Kan, Ms. Alison Wolf, and Ms. Rachel Choi. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pimentel, would you like to come through as well? Thanks. Congratulations. Congratulations. Can we get a round of applause, please? Thank you so much. Good evening, everyone. We are now going to have the proclamations for the Penfield Middle School Jazz Band, and Mr. Orahowski is the director. And just for your information, this meeting will be rebarcast on Comcast Cable Channel 28 and Verizon FiOS 29 on the following dates: Tuesday, June 11th at 9:00 p.m., Wednesday, June 12th at 12:30 p.m., Thursday, June 13th at 12:30 p.m. and 7:30 p.m., and then again on Friday, June 14th at 12:30 p.m. and 7:30 p.m. Good evening, Mr. Orahowski. How are you?
Good evening. I'm fine. How are you tonight?
Great, thanks.
Thank you so much for having us here tonight. And first of all, I want to recognize the students that are before you, but I want to tell you a little bit more about what brought them here because a number of groups you've seen have been to this conference. And I think one of the unique things about the NAFME PMEA Conference, the way they structured it, is it's not just at a state level that they were chosen, but from multiple states from our mid-eastern region for our national association. So, the groups that we've been recognizing have all gone a little further to be accepted and selected for this. The other thing for us, I think, that made it a really special event was that we got to share the hour with Pendale. You saw them here a few weeks ago, and we were both selected as middle school jazz bands, and so we got to share that concert hour, which not only was a thrill because we know each other and it's right in the same district, but what it obviously says about our program that when they selected, it was two groups from the middle school jazz realm from North Penn that were selected to be part of this. So, we're certainly very, very proud of that and honored to be here. And before recognizing the students, I also want to recognize the fact that this is not possible without amazing parents. And so, you are very fortunate to have the parents you have that support you in things like this, and a lot of them are here, and that's a shout-out to them. And I know that we all realize that role that parent grade parenting plays and all the effort and all the car rides and everything else when we get back late at night. So, thank you so much for that. So, I'm honored now to present these students for the Penfield Jazz Band. I've had a very successful season all around in all that they have done, and it has now come to a close. And many of them, a few of them move on to the high school, and a few will see again around the halls of Penfield. First, Caleb Delenge. And not here this evening with us would be Jacob Jezek. And next is Jacob Johnson. These are all seventh graders, this first bunch, I should mention, by the way. And Akshay Krishnan. Josh Rondonelli. And now on to our eighth graders: Ben Buckholz. Om Dave. Andrew Davis. Brendan Difley. Darren Ezerak. Aiden Hayes. Abigail Keough. Daniel Schutz. Michelle Schwartz. And Lily Wang. And now, the next group are our ninth graders, and a special shout-out to them for all that they have done as leaders in this group, and they will be missed as we send them on to the high school for sure. Josh Platt. CJ Poya. Not here this evening would be David Riley. Sean Snyder. And Ananya Venkatesalam.
Mr. Orahowski, would you like to come through as well, please? Can we get a round of applause for the kids? Thank you very much for coming out this evening. Okay. All right. We're going to do part of the agenda until the 8 o'clock round of proclamations comes through.
In the senior, we're going to discuss the climate survey results, so, Mr. Bauer? Dr. Bauer? Oh, yeah.
Yeah. I'm sorry about that. Right. First, well, Dan, would you mind closing the doors? Thanks. Thanks, Dan. Thanks. Thanks. Okay, so, we're going to move on with tonight's agenda until the 8 o'clock session of proclamations begins. So, first up would be the Audience of Citizens Guidelines. Is there anyone that would like to get up and make a public comment? No, seeing none. All right, then we will move on to new business, which is the climate survey presentation tonight by Dr. Todd Bauer.
For the members of the board, what we're going to do is we'll do a portion of this, and we do have some more proclamations that are assembling outside of these doors, and they'll be coming in around 8 o'clock. So, we'll do about 10 minutes of this.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. I have the privilege and honor of sharing with you, along with some teammates of mine, the results of our climate survey, which we conducted in the North Penn School District earlier this winter, beginning in February and March. But I'm going to break it apart into kind of stakeholder areas or groups within the district. So, presenting tonight will be myself, Mr. Chris Dur, Dr. Jenna Ruffo, and Ms. Christine Libarowski. So, it's 58 slides, and while I know we all enjoy working together, I thought 58 slides of just myself was a little too much for all of you. So, we'll break this apart. But to get started, and this is a document created by Hanover, so I have to give credit to Hanover. This is their executive summary report, and there is great detail, and obviously, we don't want to keep you for two hours, so we won't be going over every detail in this report, but it is there in Board Docs for your convenience. We did add some North Penn flair to the presentation. So, of importance here is the three goals of the survey, and this was part of a conversation that resulted, under Mr. Casa's leadership and the rest of the Safe Schools Committee, when we were action planning at the beginning of the year, how are we going to assess where we are and where we need to be without some stakeholder feedback? So, goal one was to gather stakeholder perceptions regarding academic, social, and school-building environment, stakeholder inclusiveness, and community engagement. And just to be clear, the survey itself had about 40 questions to begin with, and then we had 10 custom questions that we could add. And we chose to focus those 10, I guess, à la carte questions on cultural proficiency and stakeholder inclusiveness. Goal two was to identify areas for us to improve, of course, and then three, to inform our district planning. So, while we did have a comprehensive plan and a three-year plan presented by Dr. Ruffo in the fall, we still, it's a dynamic document that will continue to evolve, and this is going to help in that planning process specifically throughout the summer. So, you do a survey and a study like this, so you can get all the information you can, and while these are just some of the data, we plan to use this over the summer, and we'll talk more about that later. So, you'll see there in that opening paragraph, the highlight, and I'm not going to go verbatim as I've already said, but the highlight here being, we had over 8,400 respondents. We had about 9,000, but after you clean the data and see who answered completely, who missed some questions, who didn't give us certain things, after cleaning the data, there were 8,430 respondents, broken apart by about 5,400 students, 1,600 parents, 1,100 staff members, and then close to 200 just community members, people that just took the survey in the community. So, the format or the agenda for this presentation over the next eight or nine minutes is going to be the executive summary and key findings, the composite scores by construct. So, there were five main constructs, being the school environment, the academic environment, the social and stakeholder inclusiveness, and then the cultural responsiveness. So, there are those five pillars in the study, and then there are sub-constructs or item-level scores, so kind of narrowed down a little bit more clearly. And then finally, who responded to our survey, and then our next steps. So, here are the constructs and sub-constructs that I described. The methodology, of course, was that we fielded an online anonymous survey. Yes, we asked for some demographic information, so we could aggregate the data and take a look at who said what and get feedback from our community. But that was open for, we'll say, a little over two weeks. There were some areas where we didn't get quite enough respondents to participate, but we pushed a little bit more with the help of our Community Engagement Office, and so it was a little over two weeks, closer to three. Okay, so, these seem like very large overarching umbrellas here, but then we will get into those five individual constructs for you and show you the summary and the results from those as well. The first recommendation from Hanover was... Dom, could you click? There you go. All right. Implement professional development focusing on best practices for including multicultural material in district curricula and improving related competencies. So, I want to highlight the fact here that you'll see later, and when Dr. Ruffo shares that pillar, that our staff and our stakeholder groups clearly know the importance of being culturally proficient and including a multicultural perspective, but the need appears to be in how. They know it's important, they know they should, they are aware of the fact, but they need more professional development and support in how to do that. Next, help more of our students understand that there are adults within their school that they can speak about with their issues. So, you look at that statistic there, and honestly, sad isn't the right word, but the fact that only 60% of students said that, hey, there's an adult I can go to, is a concern. And perhaps it's a private person, and they just don't want to share, or perhaps they just don't have an adult that they're comfortable enough with. But we need to make a more concerted effort to help our students know that I'm here for you, you can come to me. So, 60% of them, while it is a majority, as Hanover points out here, we would like, of course, in an ideal world, 100% of our students to say, yeah, there's an adult in my school that I can go to. And then the last recommendation here of the big umbrellas is further community engagement and engaging more organizations within our community. So, there are highlights in our strengths, and again, we're still from that high-level balcony view, looking down on the district. Results for staff and student experiences with bullying generally are most positive relative to measures in the survey's core constructs. So, of importance here is the wording of their experiences with bullying, because on the next slide, with weaknesses, it's about their perceptions of others. So, is bullying a problem in my school? Is bullying a problem in the community? This is my experience. So, that's a strength, that their experiences with bullying are positive. Staff, 4.29 on a Likert scale of 1 to 5, students 4.52, and parents 4.35. They're all considered strong, positive results. Staff self-reported scores on instructional climate and cultural responsiveness are above average, specifically that our staff reported cultural responsiveness and instructional climate scores are high. Okay? So, again, they're talking about their responsiveness to cultural issues, their cultural responsiveness and the instructional climate within their classroom. We'll hear later that students feel a little bit differently. And both staff and students, and I was very impressed by this one, rate that student engagement is high, so they rate it very highly. Our staff says 4.28 on a scale of 1 to 5, and students are also over 4. If you had asked me, and perhaps there is bias in my answer, being an educator, but if you asked me beforehand, how would students rate their engagement in the classroom across the district, I'm not sure I would have guessed higher than 4 on a scale of 1 to 5. So, also impressive. And then, still from that balcony, are three areas of improvement. I'll do these, and then we'll break, because it's a nice breaking point. Although staff are mindful of being culturally responsive, which was a strength in the last slide, most are not prepared to incorporate multicultural material into the curricula. Perceptions of students' experiences with bullying are lower among students and staff. Okay, so this is, I pointed out the difference there. This is their perceptions of what's going on in their school, not their own personal experience, and it's a significant drop there down to 3.71 and 3.89 respectively. And then, cultural responsiveness at the school level is lower than at the teacher level. So, the staff is saying a 3.65 and parent 3.47. That's when you're talking about the school as a whole, rather than in my classroom or with my teacher. Okay? And now that we have our group joining us for proclamations, I think this is a great time to switch back and recognize our students. So, I'll take a break here.
Thank you, Dr. Bauer. Okay. All right, next up for proclamations is the North Penn High School Chamber Orchestra with Mrs. Erica Milborn, the director. Good evening, Ms. Milborn.
Good evening. Thank you very much for having us here. The students who are being represented right now are members of the High School Orchestra. Last year, we participated in a Heritage Festival, and based on their first-place gold status at the end of that festival, they were invited to participate in the Festivals of Gold this year. And we traveled to Nashville for four days, and they gave an amazing performance, sharing the stage with, at the same stage where the Nashville Symphony plays. It was a really great opportunity for the students, and they represented us very well. So, without any further ado, I would just like to announce their names. Catherine Cavanaugh, Sharon Chen, Courtney Sabanas, Brienne Scott, Susie Choi, Cheyana Kishinsky, Danielle Lostrako, Jessica Nardone, Anjali Toloru, Kendra Tiger, Abby Worthington, Jacob On, Luke Engel, Peter Yablakow, Colin McGuire... Pause for a second. You guys can go right back out the same way. Brock Dyer, Ed Leahy, Isaac Sin, Jigger Dodderwala, Hun Su Kim, Jason Lee, Yoo Min Park, Ryan Naughtie, Alex Ogre. Ryan Naughtie, Alex Ogre, Andrew Ramirez, Nicholas Rizzio, Elliot Buera, Ethan Buera, James Chapilio, Andrew Zanoni, Elliot Hong, Sam Lee, Vinayak Shankar...
Congratulations.
...and Aiden Yi.
Congratulations. Thank you, Mrs. Milburn. Will you please come through with the line, too?
Thank you.
Thank you. Can we have a round of applause for our students? Good evening, everyone. We are going to have next the North Penn High School Chamber Singers with Mr. Clank as the director. And I'd just like to announce that if you would like to watch this meeting again, this meeting will be aired on Comcast Cable Channel 28 and Verizon FiOS Channel 29 on the following dates: Tuesday, June 11th at 9:00 p.m., Wednesday, June 12th at 12:30 p.m., Thursday, June 13th at 12:30 and 7:30 p.m., and Friday, June 14th at 12:30 and 7:30 p.m. So good evening, Mr. Clank. How are you?
Good evening. How wonderful. How are you?
I'm good, thank you.
It is my honor tonight, everybody, to tell you about the accomplishments of the North Penn High School Chamber Singers, and in particular, for an event that they sang at a few months ago. I am a member of ACDA, or the American Choral Directors Association, as are most people who do what I do, teaching vocal music for a living. And we had applied a year ago to perform for ACDA's National Conference, which is only held once every two years. This year was the sixtieth conference, and was held in Kansas City, Missouri, and I was extremely pleased to find out last June that we had been accepted to perform. Now, just to tell you a little bit about this, in order to be accepted, I had to send three years' worth of recordings of our ensemble to ACDA. This is, to put it quite simply, the largest choral music event in the world, and to be selected is about the highest honor that a choral ensemble can achieve in this country. So their selection was tremendous. They were one of only a handful of high school choirs from around the nation that was invited to perform. They got to perform two concerts in halls in Kansas City that are about the equivalent of, if you think of the Academy of Music and the Kimmel Center. They performed to very critical audiences, they're all choral musicians, and received standing ovations both times. I simply can't say enough about the hard work and dedication of these young men and women who represented North Penn High School and their community so well. So I'd like to introduce them to you. So we have Megan Akias, Elijah Baker, Isabel Baldi, Madeline Burke, Cassie Calvaresi, Stephen Carroll, Chris Natchateroth, William Clark, Ally Coles, Jamin Crosby, Philip Crush, Citi Date, Jeremy Der Vessesian, Kavya Desai, Madison Neppers, Caleb Faya, Marlena Fortune, Evan Garbaccio, Olivia Greco, Katherine Hahn, Arushadi, Molly Hofstetter, Ryan Jacob, Skylar Kicks, Paul Klemmer, Kia Larkins, Kristen Lee, Christopher Lee, Joshua Mayer, Aaron Menzo, Alexander Mercer, James Murphy, Sonika Noate, Jay Patel, Evan Pelletier, Joe Pop, Brianna Radley, Giulia Romano, Rachel Rosenblatt, Hannah Rothman, Lindsay Spritzler, Emma Steersman, Samantha Steck, Benjamin Vargis, Critty Verma, and Joshua Widener.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Mr. Clank, would you like to come through as well, please? And can we have a round of applause for all the students? Thank you, everyone, for coming out this evening. All right, next up, we're going to have the North Penn High School Orchestra with Ms. Milburn as the director. And again, if you'd like to watch this board meeting again, it will be rerun on cable television, Comcast Cable 28 and Verizon FiOS Channel 29 on the following dates: June 11th at 9:00 p.m., Wednesday, June 12th at 12:30 p.m., Thursday, June 13th at 12:30 and 7:30, and Friday, June 14th at 12:30 and 7:30 p.m. Hello again, Ms. Milburn. How are you?
Hi again. I'm well, thank you. So the students that are coming before you now are also High School Orchestra members. Every year, orchestra directors in Montgomery County sponsor a County Honors Orchestra Festival, and we each have the opportunity to have our students selected to represent their school districts. There are typically about six dates, they have some rehearsal time with a guest conductor, it's usually someone in the community or a collegiate-level professor will work with the students, and then they culminate their experience with a performance. So the students you're about to meet now were the students that represented North Penn this year. Sharon Chen, Elliot Hong, Anna Gia, Alex Ogre, Courtney Sabanis, Sam Song, Isaac Sin, Yoo Min Park, Anjali Toloru, Sam Lee, Cindy Cho, Colin McGuire, Vi An Chang, Nicholas Rizzio, Andrew Ramirez, and Aiden Yi.
Congratulations. 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 Ms. Milburn, would you like to come through again as well? Can we, yeah, can we have a round of applause for... Okay, and this group is... The following students are being recognized for being selected to perform in the Pennsylvania Music Educators Association District, Region, and All-State Orchestra.
Yes, and these students are selected by audition. So I'll start first with the students that were selected for district and region orchestra this year. Sharon Chen, Elliot Hong, Anna Gia, Alex Ogre, Courtney Sabanis, and Sam Song.
Congratulations again. Congratulations again.
Additionally, the following students participated in district orchestra as well. The first young man I would like to point out is a ninth grader from Pendale Middle School, and his name is Dylan Scott. Vinayak Shankar, Aiden Yi, Sally Yun, and Anna Chen, who is a student from Pembroke, also in ninth grade.
Congratulations. 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 Is there another group? Oh, my gosh, just one more. All right. Thank you, everyone, for coming out this evening, and I think we have two more groups. (inaudible) All right. We are now going to recognize the North Penn High School Music Department. Chair and Chorus Director is Mr. Clank, and the following students are being recognized for being selected to perform in the Pennsylvania Music Educators Association District, Region, and All-State Chorus and Band, and the National Association for Music Education, All Eastern Chorus and Band, and All National Chorus. Very impressive. And just to make the announcement, if you would like to view this meeting again, it will be on Comcast Channel 28 and Verizon FiOS Channel 29 on the following dates: Tuesday, June 11th at 9:00 p.m., Wednesday, June 12th at 12:30 p.m., Thursday, June 13th at 12:30 and 7:30 p.m., and Friday, June 14th at 12:30 and 7:30 p.m. Welcome back, Mr. Clank.
It's good to be back. As my colleague, Ms. Milburn, just talked about, we are able to nominate students from North Penn High School to individually compete and audition for district band, orchestra, and chorus, and by district, we mean all the high schools in Bucks and Montgomery County that comprises our district. And if selected, a student is able to then re-audition, advance to regions, from there they can advance to all-state, and once they make all-state, there's actually opportunities to advance beyond that, which I'll talk about momentarily. So on behalf of my colleague Ted Heller, it's my honor to introduce to you students who were selected this year for PMEA band ensembles. So we have James Carnell, who made district, region, and all-state band; Jake Halpern, who made district band; Leanne Jin, who made district band; Hannah Kirchner, for being selected to district, region, and all-state band; Julie Kratz, selected for district, region, and all-state band; Thomas Lloyd, selected for district and region band; Gabby Schwartz, selected for district, region, and state band; Sasha Sidach, selected for district, region, and all-state band; Jacob Stevens, selected for district, region, and state band; Jacob Stroll, selected for district band; Kayla Vu, selected for district band; Tony Su, for district, region, and state band. And then finally, these last two students were selected a year ago for all-state band, and as such, they were able to audition this year for all eastern band, which comprises the entire northeastern United States, and we were honored to have two of our seniors selected for that. So I'd like to recognize Allison Yang, and also James Murphy. But before James goes around, he's our connecting piece, because James also was selected for district chorus this year, in addition to being an all-state band. So congratulations, James. We had another student who was selected this year for multiple ensembles. Evan Pelletier made district and region chorus and district, region, and all-state band. And then just within the choral program, we have Madeline Burke, who was chosen for district, region, and state chorus; William Clark, chosen for district and region chorus; Philip Crush, chosen for district and region chorus; Kavya Desai, selected for district, region, and state chorus; Madison Neppers was chosen for district and region chorus; Paul Klemmer was selected for district chorus; Kia Larkins for district chorus; Christopher Lee, district and region chorus; Aaron Menzo, chosen for district chorus; Joseph Pop, chosen for district chorus; Samantha Steck for district and region chorus; and Benjamin Vargis for district and region chorus. And then I wanted to hold these last two students' announcements finally, because again, they're very impressive. Similar to the other students I introduced, we had two students who made all-state chorus a year ago and were chosen for all eastern chorus this year. And so I do want to recognize Jay Patel, who this year made district and region chorus in addition to then going to all easterns. And then finally, Lindsay Spritzler. Lindsay, this year, was chosen for, I would call it, the grand prize of them all. She found out at the beginning of, well, really, the beginning of last summer, that she had been chosen this year for all-national chorus, which is just a tremendous achievement. Lindsay made states a year ago, and she and I were able to travel to Florida for a few days. She participated in just a remarkable festival and conference, and so congratulations, Lindsay, and to all the other students for their individual achievements.
(applause) Congratulations. Thank you. Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight. Proclamations is really a fun night, so thank you. No, cannot. Is he here? I saw him. Yeah, he's... There he is. So, Mr. Bauer, if you don't mind, or Dr. Bauer, we have one more honor we'd like to hand out to Mr. Bill Warmuth. He is the student representative to the Finance Committee this year, and Bill, we're going to really miss you when you go off to college, to Stanford, right? So that's an extraordinary achievement, so we congratulate you and we wish you all the best as you go out to California. Yep, come on in. (applause)
Thanks so much. Yeah. Take it as well to me, there's a replacement.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you. Thank you all for the opportunity.
Absolutely.
See you, Bill. I don't know if you heard his parting words, but that was, "Jojo's gonna love it."
(laughing) Jojo seems very enthusiastic.
Yeah, he's excited. So, okay. What a great pause there. It's always so great to recognize the kids and see them and their parents smile, so that was really fun.
Thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight. Proclamation, this is really a fun night, so, thank you. Yeah, he's... There he is. So, Mr. Bauer, if you don't mind, or Dr. Bauer, we have one more honor we'd like to hand out to Mr. Bill Warmuth. He is the Student Representative to the Finance Committee this year. And, Bill, we're gonna really miss you when you go off to college, to Stanford, right? So, that's an extraordinary achievement. So, we congratulate you and we wish you all the best as you go out to California. Yep, come on in.
Thanks so much.
Absolutely.
I don't know if you heard his parting words, but that was, "Jojo's gonna love it."
Jojo seems very enthusiastic.
Yeah, he's excited. So, okay. What a great pause there. It's always so great to recognize the kids and see them and their parents smile, so, that was really fun. Okay, so now, before I pass the mic to Mr. Dur, this is a construct scorecard. So I said there were five pillars to the climate survey. Those, as a reminder, being school or building environment, which has a lot to do with school safety and climate, which you'll hear from Mr. Dur. The academic environment, you'll hear from Dr. Ruffo. The social environment, I believe that's myself. Stakeholder inclusiveness is Ms. Libarowski, and cultural responsiveness is Dr. Ruffo. So, you'll see on this report card, if you take the roughly 50 questions in the survey, and it was not a linear survey, so depending how you answered one question, it took you to a different question. So, for example, our community members, if you look at these graphs, did not answer every question, because they didn't pertain to my son or daughter, or in my school. So, again, it was not linear. However, if you took all 50 questions, and you categorized them in one of these constructs, and then you took the average on a Likert scale of 1 to 5, these are the scores by stakeholder group. Okay, so this is the average composite score in that, within that pillar. Now, this, I think, is a wonderful graphic and representative of the results in the survey. So, clear, although the contrast here isn't as good. Maybe if you look at the televisions on the side, I think the screen behind some of our board members isn't as clear. But the color contrast, white is neutral in this case. So it says the lighter, but we do not have anything below neutral, I believe, on this spreadsheet. So the darker colors, a darker green, for example, I see in the middle column, a 4.85. That is probably the darkest green on the scale there. So the lowest, in the right-hand side column, if you look under Students, Students' Attitudes Towards Learning. Now, not Student Engagement. I'm engaged in my classroom, but rather, students in my school are engaged. So there's a difference. And again, we'll kind of break that apart for you. But I just think, as a whole, when you survey close to 9,000 people, 8,400 of which were usable data points, this is pretty impressive, that across stakeholder groups, above neutral in all of them. So, now we're going to dive in and look at each construct specifically. Okay, so this is item by item construct results. Of course, we're not going through every survey item and every stakeholder group, but kind of the highlights and some things of note. So, I'd like to introduce Mr. Chris Dur, our Coordinator of Safe Schools and Emergency Management.
Thank you, Dr. Bauer. Good evening, everybody. It's my pleasure to present a piece of this about school and building environment. Before I get started, I really just want to thank Dr. Bauer for his leadership with this survey. While it was an outgrowth of a conversation we had at Safe Schools, and there was several of us that played a piece, I really contribute the fact this got off the ground and really got done with Dr. Bauer's willingness to go toe-to-toe with Hanover, customize this survey to be something that was really useful for us. So, I'm excited to present a piece of these results for you. So first, each of these constructs has a summary of results, which we'll talk about quickly. In my piece here, being the social, the social-emotional climate, which, as we've talked about before, very closely tied to our school's safety, some of the disparity here, and you really need to drill down into the data by group to be able to interpret this well. So, I found some of these overarching results or summary items a bit confusing at the least. But you can see there, 59% of students agree that the students within their school feel like they belong, while 80% of staff and 75% of parents agree with the same. So, students being the lower of those results. Overall, I think folks feel that our schools are safe, but they still report that there's issues of violence in their school. And we'll talk about that when we get to those results, how it kind of flips a little bit from students reporting low to staff maybe reporting a little lower. And finally, regarding the maintenance of our schools, which the climate is a reflection of some of the perceptions around the maintenance of our schools, the learning environment, the common areas, things like that. 69% of respondents agree their schools are well-maintained. However, interestingly, teachers agree the least out of all of these stakeholder groups. And you can see some other numbers there with regard to the common spaces. So, students at my school regarding the emotional climate feel welcome, feel like they belong, like school. Interestingly to me, if we take, for example, students at my child's school or students at my school like school, students are at 31% there, while the parents and the teachers report much higher. So some digging has to be done to see why students' perceptions are so disparate, I think, from what our staff's understanding of those perceptions might be and what we can do to adjust that. Proud to attend school, feel like they belong at school. I think these, for the most part, align with what we may have thought anecdotally, but it's good to see some actual survey data here that reflects that. Regarding the physical environment, cleanliness and maintenance, when you take a look at, again, for example, my child's school has clean bathrooms. Again, the students reporting at a much lower rate there than parents and even staff do. When you really take a look at the data broken out, though, by school, the numbers that drive the lower are some of our older buildings, right? To a kid, maybe my school having clean bathrooms means it's not lit as well, or it's got old tile from the 70s that, because I'm a kid, I think that's not clean, right? So, contrast that with some of our other schools who, that have been renovated recently, like a Hatfield, that are white and bright and more well-lit. The perception there to a child might be cleaner, whilst adults understand that cleanliness is not necessarily tied to the decor, so to speak, or what the building looks like. So I found that result interesting. Again, perception versus reality. But when you really dig in with, to the actual data, the things that are pulling that number lower are, like your NAP Elementary Schools, which are up for some work soon. Building safety. This is where I mentioned, we're a little bit reversed with regard to the staff reporting and student reporting. So, issues with violence and issues with theft. I found it interesting that staff members reported a little less positively than even the students do with regard to those perceptions. Issues with violence, students perceive that there's less issues with violence than staff, obviously. Same thing with theft. But overall, everybody's reporting that we're providing a safe learning space for students, relatively. And that being said, personal safety at school, I was encouraged to see these numbers. Now, this being the first climate survey that we've done like this, it's important to take note of where we're at here. And for me, in my role, this slide kind of is my key slide here. Are people feeling safe in our schools? Students, parents, staff, everybody? And I think this is a relatively good picture here. But I think there's space to grow, and I think we need to do a little digging to analyze what exactly we can do, what moves we can make to even push these numbers higher and push the bar higher. One of the things, Dr. Bauer touched a little bit on trusting relationships with adults and the ways to report information. This survey was underway while we were really rolling out the new Safe to Say Something tools provided by the state. So what you see here is not necessarily a reflection of that program being in place, a method to anonymously report things to adults. So that's new, in place, trained, students being trained after this survey was administered. So it will be interesting to see in the future how our future results compare to this first baseline year of data. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Ruffo. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dur.
Okay, good evening, everyone. So I'm going to talk to you tonight about the academic environment. And the first thing we're going to look at is just an overall summary of results. So, the first finding is that our teachers view the instructional climate more positively than all of our other groups. So while it was still high across the board, there was a gap in terms of what teachers perceive versus what parents and students saw. So 100% of teachers agreed that they want students to succeed, which is absolutely what we want to see. We want all of our teachers to believe in kids. But the parents and students agreed with that statement to a slightly lesser degree. Along those same lines, student attitudes towards learning were significantly weaker than the staff perceptions. So less than half of students agreed that students work hard, but 62% of teachers agreed with the same statement. So, I think that goes hand-in-hand with what we're looking at for our professional development plan for next year. One of our key focus areas is student engagement. So while Dr. Bauer noted that students were feeling very engaged in certain aspects of the school, co-curricular, extracurricular, we're not always seeing that translate in the classroom, so that's something that we have to improve upon. And the last bullet, I think, also doesn't necessarily come as a surprise to us. It's something that we, as a board and administration, have been talking about quite a lot over the last few years. And that's our students' mental health needs. So overall, our respondents agreed that schools provide enough resources and support to varying degrees. So, in terms of mental health, that was an item that was ranked lower. There was also belief that high-achieving students and special ed students do have enough supports, but students who are underachieving, and again, students with some mental health needs, might need some additional supports. So, for our next few slides, I'm going to just run down each of those statements very quickly and give you an overall, high-level summary of what the trends are. So in terms of providing enough technology, that was something that everyone felt pretty positively about. And there was a lot of consistency between 88% to 91% agreement with those responses. Again, that student, we want students to succeed, higher for teachers than it was for parents and students. We also had agreement over 80% for students and schools having enough material resources, so books, curriculum, things of that nature. So the high expectations statement, that we're setting high expectations for student achievement, there was a 10-point gap between what parents and staff believed. So, staff agreed with that statement at 83%, while parents were at 73. Again, a slight gap on the well-rounded curriculum statement. We had students and staff differing by about seven percentage points there. And a little lower on the scale was the statement that we challenge advanced students. So that rating was between 65% and 75% agreement, with a 10-point gap between parents and students. So interestingly, our students rated that as higher than the parents and the staff. So the students are feeling that advanced students are adequately challenged, but the staff and the parents not to as great of an extent. Okay, so expecting students to do their best. A similar trend here, where we had teachers rating this higher than we had our students and parents. So we had 99% staff agreement with that. And students and parents were still high, 87%, but not quite as high as the staff was. Again, wanting students to succeed, we touched upon that earlier. Providing extra help, this was another area where there was a gap between teacher perceptions and student and parent. So we had a 24-point percentage gap there, which is pretty large, so that's something we need to look into. Keeping students updated on their progress, again, there was a gap between student belief and teachers, so that was pretty significant there, 33 percentage point gap, with students agreeing that much less than teachers. Similar for praising student efforts on schoolwork. And then connecting lessons to life outside the classroom. So, again, rated highly by teachers, not as highly by parents and students. Okay, so this next segment says, "Most students in my school." So, "Most students in my school work hard, come to class prepared, are motivated to learn." Those were our three higher areas. We had students that said, for the remaining two, only 24% enjoyed learning, so that was an area of concern. And 25% get excited to learn new things. So those were definitely some areas that we can grow on.
But that item, is that what they perceive other students to think? Because that's what it sounds like, or how they themselves feel about it.
Most students in my school. So, their perception, as Dr. Bauer had said, of what most students are doing. So again, it's all perceptual, but there's definitely some things that we can glean from that data. And this interesting thing on this slide was, we had our students agree the least, so with enjoying learning and getting excited to learn new things. And those responses, the teachers agreed to the most. So those were our biggest gaps. So our students and teachers are not on the same page with that. So that's definitely something we have to keep looking into, and again, focusing on student engagement in the classroom and how we can get them more excited about learning. Okay, now this slide is what Dr. Bauer was referencing earlier. So student engagement in co-curricular and extracurricular activities. And we had pretty strong agreement across the board that there are some really positive programs. So between 69% and 92% agreement with all of these statements about quality co-curriculars, that there are enough of them, quality extracurriculars, like sports or clubs, and then, again, having enough extracurriculars, sports, or club. The lowest rated was that parents said that there might not always be enough activities for extracurricular, and that was the lowest at 79%. Everything else was 70% or up. Okay, so the next slide is about our student support services. So I want to just break it down by what students, parents, and teachers agreed most with and agreed least. So students most agreed that high-achieving students, special ed students, and English-language learners receive enough resources and support. And we were 80% or higher for student ratings there. They least agreed with that there were enough resources available for mental health and for underperforming students. The staff and the parent perceptions fell in similar order, with agreeing most to those top three statements of supporting high-achieving students, special ed students, and ELLs, and being most concerned about, again, resources to promote student mental health and underachieving students. Now, what was interesting about this slide was this also added in community members. So we have another subgroup to look at here. And community members were also most concerned about mental health supports for students. So I think that's coming out as something clearly as a concern. It's something that we've been discussing here. So it bears out in our data, kind of the discussions that we've been having more anecdotally. Okay, so the next section is on cultural responsiveness. Uh-oh. There we go. Okay, so first we'll go through just the overarching statements. As Dr. Bauer had said earlier, while teachers are agreeing and understanding the importance of cultural proficiency, they're not feeling as prepared to incorporate culturally relevant material into their teaching. So some of the things that they would like to see are best practices for working in a culturally relevant manner, how to incorporate multicultural perspectives, and then how to communicate in a culturally proficient or culturally competent manner. Students agreed with, agreed the least with cultural inclusivity, as opposed to where the teachers were at. So one example they pointed out was 97% of teachers agree they value diverse opinions, but only 69% of students rated agreement with that statement. So there was a discrepancy there. There was also some concern that underrepresented students do not receive enough social and emotional support. And we'll go into that a little bit more as well. Okay, so this is our teacher-level slide for cultural responsiveness. And I think this is where we saw probably the greatest disparity in what students were believing versus what teachers were believing. So the way that I describe this slide is, you don't know what you don't know. So, staff had much higher perceptions of, you know, their valuing diversity. And I think that very well may be true. And we have people that are really believing that and buying into it and know that it's important, but it's not translating always to our students. And our students aren't always feeling that it's valued. So that's something we definitely need to work on. Where the gap was biggest, we had a 40% gap between students and teachers for encouraging students to express their culture. So students maybe not feeling as comfortable that they're free to express their background or culture. Okay, here, I wanted, just similarly as to what I did before, go through with you what the students, teachers, and parents agreed with the most and the least in terms of cultural responsiveness, particularly related to social-emotional. So students agreed most with the statement, and this is relative, so most out of everything ranked, that the counseling staff were well-equipped to handle issues related to diversity, at 65% agreement. And that the books and curriculum represent diversity, at 60%. So that's not quite as high as we would like to see, but that is where the students felt that they were most, reflected diversity the most, was with counseling staff being able to handle things and seeing themselves in the curriculum and books. Students agreed least with the statement that parents are invited to share information about their cultures or traditions. They only rated 42% agreement there. And again, that underrepresented students have adequate emotional and social supports. So, a little bit of a difference. So whereas they felt like the counseling staff was well-equipped to handle it to a degree, they didn't necessarily always feel that there was enough support. Yes?
Kind of pointing back to what Chris was saying earlier, you will be able to, or the leadership at the schools will be able to kind of look at a deeper level as to what that looked like at each school?
Yes, so we have...
And maybe make some goals around that at the school level?
We have that information, so we'll be looking at it at the school level, but then also with our cultural proficiency group this summer, to really plan and guide our work for next year. So just going into what parent and staff agreement was, parent... parents, again, agreed with students in terms of that books representing diversity and curriculum representing diversity was one of the higher-rated statements. And parents also agreed at sixty percent that linguistic, cultural, and family diversity were viewed as strengths. So as I mentioned earlier, not what we want to see it, but it was a relative strength in this area. And they agreed least with the same statements that students agreed least with, that parents were invited in to celebrate their cultures and that underrepresented students have adequate supports. And with staff, again, there was some consistency here. Staff felt that the books, again, books, curriculum reflect diversity, and they viewed it similar to parents, that linguistic, cultural, and family diversity were strengths. And they least agreed that there was, underrepresented students have adequate social and emotional support. And also, I think, some self-reflection in that families are not always invited to share their cultures and traditions at the level that we could. Okay, so our next slide goes over how we incorporate culturally relevant material. So this is just extremely prepared, all the way down to not at all prepared. So we have seventy-six percent of staff that feels at least moderately prepared, and twenty-four percent that felt only slightly prepared or not at all prepared. So some work to do there. And in terms of professional development, this is in ascending order in terms of what people felt they needed the most support with, down to the least. So again, general best practices, methods of incorporating perspectives, culturally competent communication methods at the higher end, then types of cultural differences. And the last couple ones here, strategies for limiting bias and understanding personal and institutional bias. So what's interesting here is this is all self-reflection. So kind of the ones that were more general and more related to curriculum were rated higher, whereas people tended to think that the things, their own personal bias was not as much of a problem. So whether it is or is not, was not measured by this survey, it's just an observation. Okay, social environment.
Thank you, Dr. Ruffo. Okay, so in terms of the social environment, teachers say adults respect and care about their students, but are less likely to agree that adults consistently enforce rules. Again, as Dr. Ruffo and Mr. Dur stated for a few other summaries, this doesn't come as much of a surprise. They, they care and they respect, but they have concerns about how discipline is implemented across the board. Specifically, staff agree that adults at their school care about students at ninety-six percent. Again, that's not "I," that's the staff in my school care, and respects students at eighty-nine percent. More than half of students say they are, they are never physically threatened or verbally harassed by other students. Seventy-four percent of students indicate having never been physically threatened, and fifty-four percent say having never been verbally harassed by other students. So still work to do there. We, while seventy-four percent is saying that you've never been verbally harassed is a good number, it has room for improvement, but the fifty-four percent is more concerning. And then our last bullet here, in terms of summary, is that many staff members report almost never being harassed for any demographic factors by other staff members. And that is a bit of a contrast from what we see above with the students. So in looking at the data and the specific items from this part of the survey, adults at my child's school, okay, so it's perceptions about the school again, care about the students, high marks there, but again, students being the lowest. That they respect students, so adults respect students. Disappointing to see a sixty-four percent from students. That students are saying the adults in my school, sixty-four percent of them, respect the students. Consistently enforce the rules, that staff number there, there's your largest discrepancy at forty-eight percent. That's representative of that second bullet in the summary findings. And also, similarly, the fairly enforced school rules. So I think these two slides in particular are strong areas of improvement. We need to focus some of our planning, and we'll hit that at the end. Students, positive relationships and disciplines. So students at my child's school understand the rules. Parents saying eighty percent that students understand the rules. I found that to be interesting, whereas fifty-six percent of the students, they're the ones that are actually there. They, that students help each other, seventy percent of the staff. I think that's an encouraging number, but then only half of our students saying that students help one another. Care about students, again, forty-nine percent, that's consistent with roughly fifty percent responses from our students. Respect other students, parents seem to be the highest on, on this slide, which I guess is encouraging, that that's their perception, but still room for growth, and that they follow school rules. Interesting that the folks who spend the least amount of time have the highest rating there, that the students follow the rules. So this is staff, positive relationship and discipline. Please indicate how much you disagree or agree with the following statements. So again, the, on the x-axis there, it's percent agree or strongly agree. So the highest being, I have positive relationships with students, and this is self-reflection. And at the bottom, my supervisor or manager cares about me. Still a good number, seventy-five percent of people feel that their direct supervisor cares about them. But I think this is one of our more positive slides, actually. If we look at my building or school provides enough technology, resources, eighty-two percent. In contrast to, I believe, what Dr. Ruffo shared, that we were closer to ninety percent from students and families. Enough materials, all the way down to quality professional development opportunities, which is totally being revamped next year, so. Notice your x-axis here, that's why I circled it, percent never. Every slide I think we've looked at prior to was agree or strongly agree. Now it's the percentage that is never. So physically threatened by staff members, you might look at this, ninety-seven percent. Well, that's the percent that never have, I have been or my child has been physically threatened. Ninety-eight percent, ninety-six, ninety-seven. We would like that to be a hundred, of course. Verbally harassed by a staff member, physically threatened by students, which aligns with the summary page there, and then verbally harassed by other students. And that's the concerning one right there. That only forty-one percent of staff, fifty-four percent of students say they have never, child has been verbally harassed by other students. So a concern. Same x-axis here. How frequently do staff members within your school or building experience harassment or bullying based on there? And this is from staff. So high marks here, but still eighty-four percent for political beliefs, physical appearance, gender. We'd like to see these all well above the ninety-four percent. And student experiences, same x-axis as well. How frequently do students within your school, not how frequently do you, but students in your school experience harassment or bullying based upon? And this slide, again, highlighting that this is one of our more negative slides, that almost half in most of these categories say yes, so this is representing the percent never. But physical appearance is all the way down in the twenties. That's a concern, that students feel as if students in their building are being harassed for their physical appearance. Okay, student experiences with bullying and harassment, I circled there, an adult at school. Please indicate how much you disagree or agree with the following statements. I feel comfortable reporting, so this is back to that overarching summary, that only sixty percent of students feel that they're comfortable reporting. Sixty percent is a number that, again, makes me sad. I wish that was a hundred percent, that they could find one. A lot of the research tells you that there is one adult in the building that you can go to, whether it's a custodian, your counselor, your principal, or your teacher, whomever, the secretary, that they are less likely to engage in risky behaviors. And that'll be tied to another survey we're hoping to launch next year, our PA Youth Survey. So student experiences, more of the same trends here with bullying and harassment, but indicate how much you disagree or agree with the following statement. That, this is more about the district. So I feel the district takes appropriate action. This aligns with the rules conversation. So they feel the district takes appropriate action to address bullying or harassment. And I'd like to say that a lot of what we've done this year, including this survey, has been geared towards this. And when this survey's kind of rolled out, we haven't seen full implementation of a lot of the things that we've, and some of our movements this year. And I feel students take appropriate action to address, or I'm sorry, the school takes appropriate action to address incidents of bullying and harassment. Staff saying sixty percent, I guess is the more encouraging number there, but still, well below fifty in other areas. And here, the percent very effective or extremely effective, the discipline code. This is a question Mr. Casa and I discussed adding, this was one of our custom questions. Is what we're doing helpful? And there has been a movement to use more restorative means to discipline in youth courts and other things, because kids repeatedly piling up detentions or in-school suspensions. Is that making a difference? Does that deter behavior? And this is telling us that the perception of our stakeholder groups is, no, it's not effective. Stakeholder inclusiveness, Ms. Christine Libarowski?
Thank you, Dr. Bauer, and thank you for pausing earlier so that we could get our proclamation students in. So I'm going to talk about stakeholder inclusiveness, summary of results. So first of all, and I don't think this is going to come as a surprise to anyone, but statement, "North Penn does attract and retain high-quality teachers, but attracts high-quality teachers with diverse backgrounds to a lesser extent." Specifically, seventy-two percent of respondents believe that North Penn attracts high-quality teachers and retains high-quality teachers. However, only slightly more than half of the respondents believe that North Penn attracts staff members from diverse backgrounds and retains staff members from, from those same backgrounds. I don't think this is any surprise, and you know, we're doing a lot of work on this. I think the timing of the survey too. We had started to begin some really intense work in that area. We'd always been doing some work, but the more intensive, more meaningful and thoughtful work began around that time and after. Our implicit bias training, the CARE Symposium, looking at our hiring practices, have all kind of happened since then. So hopefully, we would see these numbers improving. Second bullet. Parents least believe that both their school and the district overall are transparent with parents. That is, when parents are asked about their school and the district, they agree least that both the school and district are transparent with parents, guardians, or guardian school decision-making. I think this is an area where we need to dig deeper. I think when we look at the following charts, you'll see our numbers are much higher in other types of communication, not necessarily the transparent part of it, but more of the engagement, information, decision-making, but the transparency. So I would love to see a survey where we're asking specifically, where, you know, where aren't we transparent? Where can we do a better job? Maybe it's even a more clarification of some of our policies and what things we can share and what information we cannot share. Third summary. Community members perceive North Penn's engagement with the community to be lower than North Penn's self-perceptions of engagement. When asked about the district's engagement with the community, community members disagree significantly more with all statements compared to staff. For example, seventy-seven percent of staff agree that the district engages the community, but only sixty-three percent of community members agree with the same statement. Similar to, to what I was previously saying, you'll see that engagement is high, most of our numbers. But they're looking at this community engagement, perhaps it's us going out into the community, perhaps it's some of our partnerships. So I know we have them, are we not telling our stories? Do we need to tell our stories better? Do we need to focus there? How can we improve this? Where are the opportunities? So looking at the first chart, and this is where we're looking at transparency. So you'll see those, those bottom bars are our lowest numbers compared to the other numbers. I will say, we did a survey years back, maybe eight years ago, I don't know the number. So I do think we are improving since then in all areas. And I can point to a lot of things, our forums that we're doing as a school board and as a school district, our community conversations, our staff conversations, our conversations with students. And social media, just the advent of all the opportunities between Facebook and Twitter. We even have two-way questions through our website. Our board meetings themselves, trying to get more people out to them, actually broadcasting more of them. And as always, our one-way communications, our e-matters, our, all of our newsletters, our website, North Penn Television. But that's not getting at that transparency issue. So I think that's an area where, where we absolutely need to dig deeper. When we get to parent engagement at the school level, you'll see pretty similar numbers. Again, it looks like we're doing a good job in engaging and communicating, but that transparency is where the number dips a little bit. So again, we want to look at there, some ideas, what are, what are more opportunities at the school level for face-to-face and building-level communications? And again, going back to maybe a better explanation of some of our policies and, and some of the things that we, we can or cannot communicate. Parent engagement at the staff level, again, I think, I think we're strong. In general, people have a comfort with talking to the staff in our buildings, they trust us. But again, that, that bar on the bottom is, is where it dips, and that's why that was the summary result. So again, we just need to dig deeper there. School leadership and personnel. Both in these next two, these next two slides, you'll see we're strong in the decisions that we make. You know, being concerned about students, but the in-tune member, you know, being in tune with staff members' concerns, we dip there. And parents, you know, parents even more so than, than our staff. And in the next one, you'll see the same thing. So we're seeing some trends. Again, you know, is the next survey where we take these, take some of these and we dig deeper and we get more specific answers to why are we getting these answers? What are the examples, you know, how, how can we improve? I think this is just kind of the tip of the iceberg, it doesn't give us any specifics for us to work on. This last slide goes back to our diversity in staff and retaining a diverse staff. Obviously, the, you know, the top, the top graphs here are about our strong, our high-quality teachers and being able to retain, and we have the numbers to prove that. But these are the numbers behind that, that first point, and our need to, to retain, recruit and retain and develop a more diverse staff. No surprise there, working on this, and I think the next survey could, you know, drill down deeper into that and give us some more ideas.
Thank you, Mrs. Libarowski.
Okay, it's almost nine o'clock. I know you're all tired, so here we go, down the homestretch. This is who responded to our survey. I had a request from one board member to share with you the demographics of the district, just to kind of compare who responded versus what are the actual percentages. So I will add that and send that to you as a follow-up. But this is based upon race and ethnicity. Fairly, if you are aware of those statistics, it's fairly representative of our district as a whole. A little bit less Asian respondents than the district as a whole, but still, these, these numbers are fairly representative. These are our staff roles, just what roles do they fulfill in the district? How long they've been in the district? Nice shape to that curve there. Grades, seems to make sense that there are no students below fifth grade, because we did fifth grade and up. But even distribution there from parents and teachers, well, that's encouraging. That gives some validity and reliability to the results. And then some special affiliations for our special education students, English, language learners, gifted and talented, or none of the above. And this is just simply the sample size by school, how many people responded by school. So for the final slide here, and while that was a long presentation, it's about an hour of months and months of work and a sixty-slide PowerPoint. Very important information, there's a lot more there, so if you're able to take the time. We also received the raw file and a analysis and comparison, school by school. So for example, if I'm the principal at Inglewood, I can compare my results, statistically speaking, with Montgomery and my different stakeholder groups. So our next steps are to continue sharing these results with stakeholder groups. We've shared it at District Admin, but we're going to take a deeper dive at our Leadership Academy this summer, and then our data retreats with buildings, and use it to help inform our planning moving forward. Further analysis, excuse me, with aggregate data for each school. Nadine Dietrich, our data analyst, is preparing a data dashboard for all schools that they can filter based upon stakeholder group and building, and that's going to be publicly accessible to share with our community. Extensive look at the report summary and raw data in Leadership Academy. So we did essentially this in a very quick version with District Admin, but we're going to dive way deeper, break into groups, break it down, ask questions, and use a data analysis technique to kind of see where we're headed from here. And then use this data to inform our continuous improvement plans, which are presented in the fall. You'll all be invited if you'd like to join us. And our cultural proficiency executive planning. Our data retreat with middle school clusters, we're going to do this a bit differently this year. We're going to break into three groups, where we go Penfield, Pembroke, Pendale, and the serving elementary schools, and kind of set goals and work together to kind of unpack, because we have a lot of similar student groups, and work together to help inform our continuous improvement plans. And then we're, we plan to have this be a longitudinal study and take a look at it next year as well. well. So, this was kind of the setting the bar, and we've done a lot of work, I think, if you looked at these results, hopefully, it was encouraging, because a lot of our initiatives and the things that we're already doing, in terms of transparency and discipline and of the like, we're working on these things, and we're aware, but it's great to better inform what we're doing moving forward. So, right at nine o'clock, your questions, and if you'd rather ask individually, that's fine as well. This is still.
Thank you, Dr. Bauer, for all of your work that you put into this, it's really nice to be able to have a baseline, so, there is, I don't have any specific questions, it's a lot of information to absorb, but, do you know when that Nadine Dietrich will have her dashboard prepared?
So, right now, she's coming through all the PSSA data, that just came out a week or two ago, but we're planning to meet with Leadership Academy mid-July, so I would say by the end of this month. If you, I don't know that it's publicly shared yet, but some of it's there, so she's getting there, she's working through it, but I will absolutely share.
I didn't know if it was like next September, starting the school year, or if it would be available this summer.
No, within a month.
Okay, great, thank you. Does anyone else have any comments or questions?
I have a comment. First of all, thank you for all the work that you put in, and Mr. Dur, Mr. Casa, I know you informed quite a bit of this as well, Dr. Ruffo, Ms. Liberowski, there's some, I think this does validate some of the initiatives that we've started to undertake, cultural proficiency, mental health supports, you know, there's some disparity in data that, you know, I look at and I think maybe some of it's just attributable to students being a little more critical than, you know, some of our other stakeholders, and then some of it that I think, you know, is a little bit more, there's more depth to it, so I am very interested to see how we move forward, and also to really hear about a detailed plan, how we do plan to communicate what we're doing, and just the information that we've identified to the community, because, you know, we do have these regular meetings, but the truth is, you know, we get a much better response, and we're finding ways to get to them, to reach them where they are at. And I know one thing that I heard over and again about this survey is, we take a lot of surveys, they don't usually amount to much. So, you know, it's really important that we do that follow-up, and also that when we are doing things that address issues that we see here, that we're making sure that not only do we communicate it, but we show that we're tying it to this survey and trying to be responsive to what we've hearing from the community, to make very concerted efforts to say, you know, we hear what you're saying, and this is what we're doing to try to address it specifically. But yeah, thank you very much for all the work that went into this, there's so much, we could have probably done each one of these pillars as an individual meeting to unpack all of this, there's a lot to go through here. Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
I just want to second a lot of what Mr. Fusco said, and I think one of the, a lot of the trends are things that we are, we're prepared for, that we're aware of, or that we've already moved forward on, but I do think that for me, one of the takeaways is that I will want to look for more, and this is this issue of student engagement and the disparate kind of responses that students had compared to other members, and so, I think there are things as a board that we do to try to look at issues of student engagement, but as a board, if you have recommendations of how we can support that, or things that we can do at that board level, to please continue to share with us. And I think tonight, and, you know, with the proclamations, with the, you know, having student board liaisons, but if there are other ways that we can take a community for, not to the community, but to the students, or if we can get their feedback in different ways, I think that would be something that would be so important to all of us.
Great, thank you.
I just wanted to, I mean, early on, I, when we started talking about using Hanover, I talked about just how important it is to use a third party, and I think for us to point out to people that it's not like we, although we had input, we didn't just create our own survey and analyze our own, that really, we had a third party look at this for us, and the feedback that we got is so detailed and really gives us some good information to move forward, and certainly, there are things in it that we can look at and say, oh, well, you know, is this kind of a one-off or something like that, but there's enough in here that you can see trends that I think could really support the goals moving forward, so I'm very interested to see the continuous improvement plans, you know, built at each building and how they tie to the other things that we're doing, so, just thank you for your leadership in getting this, I know we kept saying, you know, climate survey, climate survey, and we just appreciate being able to really see this, because you do have to be courageous to take a hard look at what you're doing, the good and the not-so-good, and I think that's what we had to do here, and so, you know, I think the fact that, is my understanding, that we haven't done this before.
It's been a while, we had not used Hanover before, though.
Okay, so, you know, I think this is just a new step for us, to say, you know, we are going to be critical and take a critical look at what we're doing and how we can improve for everyone, for all of our stakeholders, so, thank you.
I'm just curious, because I saw a lot of data from how parents are perceiving the teachers' responses to their children and things like that, was there any data, were there any questions asking about how the teachers see the parents' engagement, the parents' involvement, are we seeing any demographic information that maybe there are certain groups we need to be targeting more to help bring them into the classroom, or did we get any of that in all of this?
Trying to go back, here we go. I thought...
Sorry, Todd, put you on the spot.
No, that's okay.
I think it's more general, so the information was really collected about, you know, what we as a school are doing, so there weren't any really detailed questions about that, I think we can kind of extrapolate some of that from, based on the responses in terms of, you know, people maybe feeling like they're not welcomed in to talk about their culture or their traditions, and target our groups that way, but I don't believe there were many specific ones about that.
Yeah, I thought there might be one buried in here where teachers were talking about the parent engagement.
Yeah, I just would be interested to see how our teachers are perceiving that, that react, that response as well.
One specific one, too, because one really sort of upset me, which was that only twenty-four percent of students say that students enjoy learning, was there a question that asked them personally, because there was discrepancies with bullying, I'm not bullied, but a lot of people are, I'm wondering if what their self-perception would be versus what they perceived their friends to believe is engagement in school.
I don't think there was a specific question, I am engaged in learning.
Yeah, because I imagine that would be higher.
And I think some of these questions highlight what we need to drill down on right in the future, this is part of that baseline and a very good start. Part of the initial statistics that Mr. Dur was going over, the responses, deals with school safety and perception versus reality. I think it's also important, this is a reflection of society in general, in our community, so there's that aspect of how students feel when they're in a school environment as it's related to what's in the news, what they're dealing with. And so, for a survey like this, because of survey fatigue, I think that Todd, you did a great job, or Dr. Bauer, you did a great job with Hanover in making sure that this was digestible, so we can at least get this first bite of the apple, so to speak, and we can get this data and use it as a compass to evolve each year, learn from our baseline. What I'm very pleased with the administration is the, how courageous you've been to embrace what the data says, to go into this process, understanding that this is about how we improve for students, for all the stakeholders, and this is really part of, you know, communication and transparency and data, that's what creates accountability, and, you know, one of the reasons, I know, speaking as one board member, when I wanted to be on the board, was realizing that of, I think just about all the districts in Montgomery County, you know, North Penn still was not, at least in recent memory, checking its blind spots, and what matters gets measured, and that's what this first step is, and it's very important for those community members who took this survey, who now need to see the results and the action, but even those who now have to understand what's being communicated, is that we're looking ourselves in the mirror, you know, this is part of understanding how can we be more curious so that we can develop solutions, and that's not something that you see every day from, you know, boards, when they want to understand what is it that we need to do better. I think most importantly, when we decide to spend taxpayer money and have to be accountable for results, if you're not doing this type of survey, you don't understand whether your dollars are really going where your mouth is, and, you know, this type of survey comes full circle with our budget process, with our committee process, so that it all works together in harmony, in a holistic, strategic, comprehensive approach, and it's something I think that this board could be very proud of in moving forward. In my background, as all of you know, it's about campus communities and connections, and that's exactly, I've worked on that federal legislation about communication and transparency, and what you see is city stat in, right, in municipal government, and how do we become more efficient and effective with our dollars, and you can see crime stats as well, and they call comp stat in policing, and that's every week, sometimes stakeholders actually have to answer, looks like the administration is today, here's where we're weak, here's where we're strong, here's where we're going to go forward. I think it's very important for the community to understand, this is a way for the board to begin to set policy and ask questions, that, you know, add to that continuous improvement that you mentioned, so thank you very much for spearheading this, it's a great initiative for North Penn, and really look forward to seeing what the results are when we get to year two and year three in that improvement.
So, we do thank the board and the community for their support to be able to administer this survey, we're also very thankful to Hanover Research, we did have the opportunity to debrief with them, and they were very complimentary of North Penn and the efforts being made in North Penn, and also very complimentary of many, many areas within this survey indicating lots of support for our schools in this community, and a big commitment to continuous improvement there, so they recognize that as present among North Penn, and that we have this desire to continuously improve, we don't rest in our laurels, we know that we can continuously improve. So, we look forward to now building goals, we do have a cabinet-level meeting coming up here in June, where we'll process all of this, and be looking forward to goals coming into the coming school year, and then we also have, each of the buildings have their meetings with their administrators and set goals, and have data driving those decisions, so this will be a piece of that as we set goals for this coming year. The board also then has the opportunity to respond to the goals that the superintendent, the two assistant superintendents have developed, and once we have support for those, those will be posted on our website as we develop the plan to move forward. So, again, thank you so much for the support to administer this survey, we cannot claim to be best-in-class in all areas, and we never have said that, but that said, we're very strong in many, many areas within the district, and we're quite proud of that, so we look forward to that continuous improvement and what the future holds for us here in North Penn. Thank you again.
Thank you. Okay, with that, I think, do I have any, there's one more chance for public comment, does anyone want to make public comment? Okay, then, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'm moving.
All right, meeting adjourned, thank you very much.